Well, good evening and welcome. We're glad to have you all here with us tonight. I'm going to go ahead and call to order the regular monthly meeting of the Cape Girardee Board of Education. It is Monday, October 28th, and the time is 6:02. Let the record show that all board members are present outside of Dr. Fegley at a conference, and please rise as we pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Up first, we have the approval of our agenda. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda? Mr. Cook and Mr. Welker, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The agenda is approved. Up next, we have recognitions, and I believe up first, we have our Terrific Tigers. So I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Mr. Cook. He's going to call your names out one by one. Parents, you are just as much a part of this as well, so feel free to stand up as we applaud your Terrific Tiger. You can come forward, take pictures, and that kind of thing, too.
Alma Schrader Elementary, Lydia Evans, third grade daughter of Lisa and Kenneth Evans. Lydia brings everyone she meets so much joy. She has the most kind and caring heart towards everyone around her. She can always be counted on to be following directions, working her hardest, and setting an example of what it means to be a Tiger. Congratulations, Lydia. Blanchard Elementary, Jacoby Frick, third grade son of Shayna and Jeff Frick. Jacoby serves as a role model in the classroom, setting a high standard for his peers. He's attentive in class, follows instructions promptly, takes pride in his work, remains persistent in all tasks, and strives to do his best, both inside and outside of the classroom. He's a true friend and kind-hearted to everyone he encounters. Congratulations on this amazing honor, Jacoby. Clipper Elementary, Stephen Porter, fourth grade son of Stephanie and Michael Porter. Stephen is a reliable student with a caring heart. He can always be counted on to participate in class, help a classmate, or lend a hand when needed for a teacher. Stephen shows excellent responsibility and is always respectful to others. He is eager to learn and always tries his best. Clipper Elementary is proud of him for representing Clipper as a terrific Tiger and Student Council Fourth Grade Representative. Franklin Elementary, Kenley Byrd, third grade daughter of Shanika and Daniel Byrd. Kenley possesses the quantities qualities of any good leader. She demonstrates initiative by taking charge in group activities. Her positive attitude helps to encourage others to do their best. She goes above and beyond by always volunteering to assist when the need arises. Congratulations, Kenley. Jefferson Elementary, Odin Gilbert, third grade son of Kaylee and Ronald Gilbert. Odin embodies all the qualities of a terrific Tiger. He comes to school eager to learn and enjoys participating in class activities. He's always willing to help other students and teachers. He's always following the classroom and school-wide expectations. He's a kind friend to his classmates and is a fantastic role model for those around him. Keep up the great work, Odin. Central Middle School, Charis McBride, fifth grade daughter of Jennifer and Steve McBride. Terry W. Kitchen, Junior High, Paisley Underwood, eighth grade daughter of Abby and Jody Underwood. Paisley was selected as Terrific Tiger due to remarkable positivity and leadership in the classroom. Her eagerness to assist others and her passion for learning motivate her classmates to reach their full potential. Paisley's kindness and commitment perfectly represents the essence of a terrific Tiger. Keep up the great work, Paisley. Central High School, Royce Lu, 12th grade son of Yang Xiao and Beijing Lu. Royce is a respectful student who ensures he turns in high-quality work. He takes time to study and engage in classroom discussion. He is nothing short of a gentleman and a joy to have in class. Royce is an exemplary student. Congratulations, Royce. Central Academy, Deonte Item, 12th grade son of Victoria Item. Let's see, from September, we had Alma Schrader, Lila Jackson. Fourth grade daughter of Sarah and Jeremy Jackson. Lila is a perfect example of what it means to be a terrific Tiger. She's always ready with a smile, consistently following the rules, and she gives her best effort in any task, whether it's listening attentively, actively participating, or simply helping others. Lila's willingness to go the extra mile makes her a true leader in the classroom. And then from last month, Jefferson Elementary, Seville Bell IV. Terry W. Kitchen, Junior High, Cole Wilson. And then Central Academy, Ashawn Burton.
You're more than welcome to stay throughout our entire meeting.
Everybody's dying to hear this.
Thank you all for coming.
Talk to the camera, talk to the camera. Oh, it's awesome.
I mean, it clears out sometimes, but this is pretty clear.
And with that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I'd like to motion to commend the three people who stayed.
Come up here and get your grab.
All right, that is it for recognitions this evening. Up next, we have information proposals or comments from the audience. I can only imagine there's not anyone this month. Mr. Payne?
None this month.
Okay, thank you. I know this is recorded. It might have people watching, just so I always go ahead and read this language. Oh, yeah, keep doing my thing. So I'd like to read this language from the... But yes. Request to place an item on the agenda or to address the board should be submitted in writing at least five days in advance of the regular monthly board meeting. Please submit requests to the Board Secretary, which is Mr. Payne, at the Central Administration Office. Constituents who request to address the board are allotted three minutes to speak. For more information regarding public participation at board meetings, please see board policies on the district's website. No, no, no. It's like a 30 for 30, school boards, right?
I'm sure I talked to every one of you guys at least once, and now this guy, I've got to take at least 16 pictures.
You're going to have to get a really good view on that.
And in case anybody was ever curious which board policies those were to review, if you're watching this, Policy BDDB-2 regarding agendas, Policy KC regarding community engagement, and Policy BDDH-1, public participation at board meetings. Up next, we have our informational reports, and first is the Board President's Report. Myself and Dr. Fegley got to join a lot of the cabinet up in or over in Kansas City for the Missouri School Board Association Conference, MSBA Conference. It was a great time. Really enjoyed going to that like we do each year, and we learned a lot. We had a lot of fun. It was a good time. October 21st was the first day at the Cape Central Academy. I kind of gave a little blurb on that last week as far as how well-done that project was and all the amazing things that went into it. So just want to give one last shout-out to everyone involved. Mr. Crowell for the second time is, he's not here to receive kudos. Okay, but somebody can share that with him. We appreciate him as well. But first day of school, heard it went well. That's awesome. Up next, we have our Superintendent's Report. Dr. Binion.
Okay, we've had a full month already, so I'm going to go through several things, several pages. We had our first student advisory, or actually our second student advisory council with just our students. That was last week. We had a good time. We met with students last week. We had a great time engaging with our students about ways to enhance their educational experience in our schools. We did split up into two different groups. We have a K6 group, and, no, I'm sorry, we have a K54 group, and then a 512 group, correct, for secondary. There were 23 topics that wanted to discuss and rank a few of those included. Some of them were fairly humorous. I had a good time talking with the kids. They didn't make this list. I don't know why, Dr. Beck. Student choice for learning activities. One of my favorite was breakfast and lunchtime serving and lengths of breaks. Additional food options for students during the school day. I like that one. Homework is assigned and graded. Some of those students were like, no homework, but then they came back and said that they wanted homework, which I'm glad that they said that. Different reading selection options for classes with required literature. Student tutoring options. That was really something that they talked about quite a bit, was the tutoring options, because we have so many different tutoring options, but they would like to see even that even expanded in a different way as well. Our next meeting will occur in November with both groups again, so we're looking forward to that. Dr. Beck has done an unbelievable job organizing that, and really the kids are having fun being part of it as well because they feel like they're being heard. Some of our conversations were pretty deep, and so we started saying, you need to add more details to what you're talking about. So we're actually going to come away with some really good information so that we can implement some and make some different changes, too, for our kiddos. So we're excited about that. Family engagement. I was in all kinds of family engagement committee. Ms. Talent does an awesome job with that. We had about four or five people here for our community engagement committee. That was last week. We had it here. We really talked about the new rooms communication and how that was going. We kind of talked to them a little bit about the hiccup that we had with rooms, but now it's working really well, and we're really excited about that. We also got input from families on how we can encourage more families to get involved with schools. We had a good discussion. It was a great conversation, and we're thankful for the families who took time out of their day to come and share insight with us, and we're looking forward to doing that again this year. But again, Kristen does an awesome job organizing that and getting everyone here. Next is our Teacher of the Year banquet. I know we talked about Ms. Taylor. She actually was celebrated last weekend, and Ms. Talent was able to go and celebrate with her as well. We were at MSBA, and then we were traveling back, so we weren't able to attend. She's going to come back probably next month so that we can do a little bit of a celebration for her as well. We'll have her as part of our beginning ceremony. And then, again, you talked about the 21st. We opened up Central Academy. We had a great opening day. The kids were excited to be in the buildings. They were very, they were very excited how large the classrooms are. I don't know if you guys have been in there. The classrooms are so much more space for those students, and I think that they appreciate that because I don't think that they have had that type of space at Central Academy. So kudos to them. I'll be honest with you. We had, again, Mr. Crowell, and his team was unbelievable. The maintenance team, nutrition staff, IT, the entire Cape Central Academy team did an incredible job moving all of that equipment over the days that we were supposed to be off. So I will tell you, they have, they set their classrooms up, and we're ready to go on Monday, so we're excited about that. We had our first podcast, and Ms. Talent's going to allow me to continue to do podcasts with her because I didn't mess it up too bad. Yeah, well, I'm forcing her to make me, allow me to do podcasts with her. So I believe you posted that already, so if you guys have a chance to take a look at the podcast, it's pretty entertainment, pretty entertaining. I like making Tyson nervous. He was in our first podcast, and he had to sit next to me. So Mr. Moyers was a little nervous having to sit next to me, and he didn't know what kind of questions I was going to ask him, but we still had fun, didn't we? And we talked about our athletic program and some of the great things that are going on in our district. One of the things that we have been kind of brainstorming recently is the list that we talked about at our retreat. So some of those topics that we talked about at our retreats, we're going to try to do some little fun things that we want to do with that podcast as well. So thank you guys for giving that input. If anyone, anyone, any parent, any student has ideas for a podcast, please reach out to myself or Ms. Talent, and we'll come and talk to you and see if that's something that will fit within our schedule to do a podcast. But it was actually pretty fun. I'm a little nervous. You know I don't like to talk. So we're looking forward to doing that. We're going to try to do those after every board meeting, too, because we're going to do a little bit of a board update with that as well, but we got to keep it short. The one that we did was 20-something minutes long, and we want to keep them under 10 minutes. Ms. Talent won't stop talking. That's part of the problem. And so I'll have to curb her talking all the time on the podcast, so.
What's the name of the podcast again?
CT Now.
CT Now.
CT Now. I was posted on Facebook. I saw the... Well, that's all I have for my report, Superintendent Report.
Fantastic. Well, up next, under Informational Reports, we have the Academic Services Report, and first is Jobs for American Graduates, also known as JAG. Mr. Russell?
Yes, so...
And I'm sporting my JAG t-shirt. Drop the tie for the night.
So Ms. Burley was slated to be here, except for I told her that she didn't have to because it was move week last week, and then I forgot to take this off the agenda. And so you get me this way.
She will come in.
She will, yeah. They're going to come back later, bring students, and do a full report. This is what she wanted me to share with you guys for this month. And so Ms. Burley is new to this position. She's been social studies teacher with us for years, but she's excited to move into this new role. And in her first year, we added 38 new members to the JAG corps, and so really excited about that. Their officers have been working hard, doing a lot of different things, and going out and making that connection with a lot of the community partners that they partner with. And so let's scroll down here just a little bit. This is from their induction ceremony, which was earlier this month, and then the bottom one there is, she has different college groups come in, and this was one of the sororities on campus came and presented to the students. And then, other activities, they went up to Perryville to Rankin. They shadowed different welders and HVAC servicers throughout the community. We've already talked about the college speakers. They've been to Safe House Women where they got some extra training on healthy relationships and what that looks like. And then they did volunteer for trick-or-treat that the foundation helped, needs some help with. And here, what you see at the top is they partnered with the National Guard here in town, and they went through some leadership training with them. That's the leadership team, part of the leadership team. And then they partnered, too, with, there in the bottom right is, they had a huge Build My Future event with CMO, which there were, what, 2,400 students came in. Our CDC helped out with that a little bit, and...
Packed every lunch.
They packed every lunch for them. But JAG got to go and experience that, and one student even got a job offer from somebody there, so it was exciting day for everybody there. And then upcoming, they're going to tour Mondi, CTC, Beauty Schools, CMO, and then they're going to do an epic photography class, so they're really excited about that. And they're really excited about their new space. We talked about their new space, and so they sent over pictures of their expanded new space, which is about one and a half times the space that they had. They will be back in numbers with a lot of good statistics. They told me not to share the state-level statistics for this year. They wanted to do that, and so we're going to let them do that later.
I'll wear my shirt again.
That's right.
Thank you.
Please wash it.
All right, up next, we have the Aspiring Leadership Academy Program Update with Dr. Beck.
So Mr. Russell left attachment on for a presentation that wasn't supposed to be on the agenda. I attached the summary and program objectives and then didn't add the attachment. So I will share that with you guys separately through an email with all the artifacts later, but just quick program overview. Obviously, second year facilitating Leadership Academy District internally, strictly internally. It's designed for current certified staff members that are committed to developing their leadership skills in preparation for potentially becoming an assistant principal, director, principal in the district. As we know, educator shortage doesn't only apply to teachers statewide. It's just becoming a more and more difficult job field to fill right now, and a lot of those teachers that used to aspire to move into leadership roles, they either get into it and they quickly burn out and leave the profession, or they're just staying in teaching because they don't see the benefit of that added stressors moving forward versus retirement. So we aim to try to tackle some of that shortage problem internally by hosting our own Aspiring Leadership segment. We have eight cohort members. We've had eight the first year and then eight this year. Some key indicators that tie directly to the program. One thing, it's a huge benefit to the staff members because they get enhanced tuition reimbursement. Almost virtually every teacher you talk to that is aspiring to get into a leadership role will have to go back and pursue some type of advanced degree to get that certification, so that could be a master's level course program. It could be a head specialist. I actually did some quick math while we were sitting here. Our educational partnership discount, we've established with CMO right here in town, and then completion of the Leadership Academy with enhanced tuition reimbursement. They could actually acquire an educational specialist in the ed leadership for $6,000 total. If you know anything about college graduate tuition rates, that is a very low number to have to spend to get a graduate-level degree. I don't think anybody at this table could say we got our degree for that cost. So we hold sessions starting in September. They run every month of the year covering various topics. In the background of topic presentations, they kind of introduce them to the world of administration. We also do book studies. In addition, this year, they're all participating in mock interviews with cabinet. They do shadowing administrators across the district for the day. They also shadow with me for one day, and then they have to complete an action research project. Over the course of the entire year, they will cover topics such as culture and climate, which Dr. Binion focused on them with. Mr. Crowell, who's not with us tonight, was this month's lead facilitator for presentation on building facilities and operations. Mr. Russell will be next in November for curriculum instruction and assessment. I handle human resources and staff evaluation in addition to facilitating all of our other activities. Ms. Dudek will do budgeting and school finance, and then Mr. Brian Payne and Mandy Keys will do legal obligations and special education law, and then communicating your vision and marketing your school with Ms. Talent will be our last segment before the action research projects culminate. And then, most recently, this past Friday, we actually facilitated an additional professional development opportunity and had Ms. Tina Schusler, our Academic Services Coordinator, accompany five of our members to the Glenview Live to Lead event that was hosted here at the Drury and Cape. Got to talk with them today and get some feedback on the event, and they said it was outstanding, great conversations occurring. That was actually Ms. Ashley Radicki, Chelsea Bledsoe, Austin Borden, Sarah Hahn, and Elizabeth Lukifer that attended. So, like I said, I forgot to attach my supporting documents, so I'll send those out separately in an email, but do you guys have any questions for me about the program right now?
I don't think so. It's exciting. It's a lot of good topics. All right, up next, we have our Support Services Report, looking at the Operation of Facilities Program Evaluation. I believe Dr. Binion's going to cover that for us tonight. It's on the TV, if you could read that?
I've got it on mine, too, if you want. This is our yearly, our Operations of Facilities costs. Josh typically does that. We do this every other year. This is the even year for that. So in 2023, so I'm going to give you two different year numbers on our cost of the program. For '23, '24, around $5.9 million was spent, and '24, '25, $5.4 million was spent on programming. One of the big things that everyone knows that we're working on this year is the 10-year plan. So this is really focused around what we're doing with our 10-year plan. We put the RFQ out. We chose IDS as our vendor who's going to, our third-party vendor who is going to be doing the third-party evaluation. They are in the process of talking to our stakeholders. They spoke with administrators the last couple of weeks and getting input from them on what they'd like to see in their buildings. It's very important that we get great feedback, just like we did with our CSIP plan. So they're taking their time doing that. They're getting ready, probably in the next couple of weeks, starting with our community involvement. We really want targeted community involvement on interviewing, and then they're going to work with the board as well, and then our students, and then also cabinet on what we feel we need in our district. And then they're going to compile all of that information, and then we're going to develop our 10-year plan from that. It's just very important that it's very detailed, so that's why they're taking a lot of time to make sure that we're doing it right, so that when we start talking about bonds, when we start talking about what we need to build next, it's really focused on our CSIP and what is needed in our district. So we're looking forward to the information once they get that done. Concerns regarding the program data, concerns will be identified through our Long Range Plan. Our short-term concerns are being addressed now. In the past 18 months, our district has undertaken three major construction projects. We're still finishing some of those up. Many of those projects are fulfilled with internal employees, which is a financial benefit, but does create a backlog of everyday work orders. So our custodians and our maintenance workers are, have a backlog of orders that need to be completed, and they're starting to work through that. They're taking a little bit of a breather because they've worked so hard on Central Academy, but they're going to be hitting it very quickly so that we can get caught up on those backlogs. Recently, we have been having difficulty in filling some custodial positions. If you know anyone that's interested in a custodial position, please send them our way. Just our program goals again is completion of our 10-year facility plan this year, maintain clean, safe, and reliable facilities, update equipment, replacement schedules, continue to upgrade electrical systems, live HVAC through grants to lower utilities. We did have an evaluation done on our energy efficiency, and we met with Navitas, who does that, and so they gave us some ideas to save dollars on energy savings. So we are looking at those things. That's going to be part of that 10-year plan as well. There's a lot of low-hanging fruit where we can really grab hold of those and really save some dollars on energy if we just look at it, put dollars to sense to it. So we're excited to see the final product of that so that we can actually start saving dollars through energy efficiency. And that's all I have for that report.
So I think this will come up probably in our 10-year plan with that process, but it struck me that, like, the cost from '23, '24 to '24, '25 is down 10%, which seems really odd when you're bringing more facilities online that your operational costs would go down. Is that a function more of, like, the grants part? I didn't read that when I read this last night, but is that more a function of the fact that our costs maybe didn't go down, but like where we got the money from? Like, we didn't pay it because of grants? Or, I don't know, and it's not a question necessarily for right now, if we don't know.
Not. We'd have to look at it.
Like, operational costs, the budget, pretty well stays the same from year to year. We do have some increase. I would say, I mean, not, I didn't, like, look into this, but I would say it has to do with construction projects. If he has a lot of construction projects or buying multiple vehicles, his budget's going to be higher when we...
Okay. That makes sense. That makes sense.
And then this year, we haven't had the bills.
One last thing. One last thing, he did want me just to give you a facilities update for the board meeting. Again, we want to commend our maintenance staff as well as the entire staff at Central Academy for the successful move to their new building almost two weeks ago. The food and nutrition service staff under the direction of Dana McClard did an outstanding job getting the serving lines set up and tables set up for the meals. We were actually down there watching the kids up, and it flowed very smoothly for how quickly they put everything together. The staff and students are still settling in, as well as some finishing touches are taking place, such as some basketball goals. The kids really wanted somewhere to play basketball. They will have a place inside with two basketball goals. They'll be installed fairly quickly, probably in the next couple of weeks. Hopefully, they'll have that. The CTC welding lab is still going well. Plumbing and electrical fixtures are finishing up, as well as sheet rock is going up. The facility is really coming together. I don't know if any of you have been out there to take a look at it.
Is that the one in the back of the house?
Right next to CTC.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
If you get a chance to drive by there, it's really starting to come together and looking great. And you know that's a $5 million grant that we wrote so that we can expand our welding program and post-secondary welding program. IDS has completed the majority of the administrator interviews for our long-range plan and will soon be moving on to the next group to interview. We will be putting a call out to the community to see who would like to be part of that committee. That will make up various groups to have input in our long-range plan. Soon, work will begin on the old Central Academy where our ECSE is going to reuse that facility. We have pushed that off. They will go in in the fall, the start of the '25, '26 school year, just to give them some more time to get that facility where it needs to be, so that'll be an easy transition for them, so.
They also prefer that delay because they felt it was difficult for the kids.
The transitions were going to be difficult for them. Over the past two weeks, our buildings were being tested, being tested and drilled by the Cape Girardeau Fire Department. All buildings so far have passed with flying colors, and we want to thank the fire department for their work in keeping up safe and knowledgeable on fire safety. And that's all that Josh had.
Very good. Any questions? All right, up next, we have our Community Teachers Association report. Welcome.
Hi.
Good.
You got big shoes to fill. The lady last week did like basically sang and danced this whole day.
Oh, gosh. Okay. So I'm a new face up here. I am Amy Mayes. I'm the treasurer of CTA, and I work at Clifford Elementary as a reading specialist, so I'm glad to fill in tonight for Tyler. It's kind of long, lots of things going on, so.
Lots of great teachers to talk about.
Yeah, this might be a setup. I don't know. All right, for Alma Schrader, Susie Owen encourages to have fun with the karaoke with the counselor episodes. Shout out to Mr. Borden, Mrs. Price, and Mrs. Pickens for completing their STEM training through the project Lead the Way to become PLTW STEM Implementers for Alma Schrader. Congratulations to Mrs. Gentry on receiving a foundation grant to purchase ukuleles. Thank you to Carla Biddle and Rhonda Young for returning from retirement to teach for us. Thank you for hosting a safe and fun trunk-or-treat. From Blanchard, Maddie Walker has been such a great addition to our staff. She goes above and beyond to meet her students' needs. From CAO here, all the CAO staff are positively embracing the extra transition, positive pathways, and cottonwood students in the building, and all the ensuing noise, commotion, and bathroom waiting lines. I want to thank the board, I don't know who this is from, but it says they want to thank the board office for the beautiful plant they've sent upon my return. It was very thoughtful and made me happy to be part of the Cape Tigers family. Central Academy, Andrea Beggs and Justin McMullin for positively embracing the huge task of moving an entire school. All CA staff for taking the monumental task of moving an entire school. Ms. Libby and Ms. Jennifer and all the kitchen staff who have worked so hard to feed students some positive pathways and transitions in their temporary location. From Clifford, Ms. Kennedy Keys for her outstanding work with her kindergarten maiden voyage. Her momma can be here and be proud to hear all this. Watching her in her classroom would lead you to believe she's a seasoned veteran teacher. It's impressive to watch her teach and very evident that she loves her students. She goes above and beyond to help them achieve academic success. Way to go, Kennedy. Ms. Laura Fletcher, our new behavior specialist, has jumped right in and is doing a fabulous job supporting teachers, students, and parents. Ms. Kayla Fisher, our new third-grade teacher, is doing an amazing job thus far. She has many challenging behaviors and handles them like a veteran teacher. All right, if I mispronounce the name, please forgive me. CTC Chef Yant for the fabulous buffets the last couple of weeks. Culinary program led the effort with the help of several others to make 2,400 sack lunches for the Field My Future event. Emily Lampfer received MCC TA Assistant Director of the Year. From our Early Childhood Center, our principal April for being an advocate for her teachers and staff. Ashton for always being a champion for students and staff every single day. A special thanks to everyone who served on the committee to make our ECC Fall Family Night happen. All kudos to everyone who came out and helped that night. At Franklin, our cafeteria staff and custodian for going above and beyond to make our family picnic a success. Ms. Ramdill, our art teacher, for decorating our school walls with outstanding artwork created by our students. They love art class. Ms. Har, our music teacher, for starting syncopation, I think, a new after-school percussion group. High School, the social studies department for covering Ms. Hyder's classes after she was out for three weeks recovering from a car accident. Jefferson School, Kayla Cooley and Melissa Thomas for working so hard to get everything ready for an unforgettable movie field trip for our students. The sped team and psych examiner have worked tirelessly this year to meet the needs for our students. We couldn't ask for a better team. Ms. Veronica, the secretary, is incredible. Her job is insanely busy, and she does it with the best attitude. From the junior high, Coach Corey Channing is fantastic ICU lifeguard. She's encouraging, listens to, understands, and is enthusiastic about helping our students reach their goal. From the middle school, Lena Penner, her Piner, has done tremendous work helping our ELL students and empowering teachers to address the needs of these students. She shares resources, provides PD opportunities, and treats her students with respect and dignity. Mr. Brian Heigai has joined our CMS family with excitement about teaching middle school. He is flexible and willing to help. Shout out to Shannon Bergoff, who has taken on both roles of behavior interventionist, as well as managing her assistant tech position while I'm home recovering from surgery. Beyond blessed to work with her. That's from Jennifer Heck. Nurse Angie Stone has been doing an amazing job. She truly has gone above and beyond stepping into this new role. Thanks for being an amazing asset to CMS. Emily Hill goes above and beyond for her students and takes an extra, I think there's a typo, but takes an extra step, maybe, if it's stated. She truly cares for her students and all the staff around her to meet any need head-on. She's an amazing teacher who can adapt to anything. Our First Literacy Night was loved by all the families and a huge success. And then I just wanted to add a shout out to our superintendents here because at the CTA, we really appreciate our superintendents for the time that they've spent collaborating with us. The open communication has been very valuable for all of us, and we really appreciate it. That's it.
That's awesome. Thank you.
That's awesome. Thanks.
All right, up next, we have the Treasurer Finance Report. Ms. Dudek.
I am going to report on the September 24 fund balance report. The general, excuse me, the general fund started the month with 19.9 million. We received 1.4 in revenues. Expenses were a little higher than our revenues at 1.9 million, and we also transferred 1.9 million to the special revenue fund, which is the monthly transfer that we do, leaving us with an ending fund balance of 17.5 million. The cash investment detail is listed. Something else that happens in September is that we make our principal and interest payments on our bonds. So for September, if you look under the debt service fund, we've made a little over $1 million of interest payments this month, and that comes out of the VOK financial bank account that is listed below. Our audit also started, the district's audit, and so we'll be bringing that next month for presentation to the board for approval. Does anyone have any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. All right, up next, we have the Districtwide Athletics Report. Mr. Moyers.
Good evening. So first, high school and junior high athletics, fall sports, the high school are coming to end of their seasons. District cross-country is this Saturday, class four and five district. We are the host, which that's a really large undertaking. We'll have about 36 schools here, which means there's 72 teams, because we have boys and girls cross-country teams. All at the O-Sage, it's at the, at the, since the CMO course is also where we've been running the last few years for our invitational. So it's, it's an exciting thing. Coach Sheridan and Coach Gahn have really taken that by the horns and done a great job. District football, first-round game here on Friday versus Webster-Groves at 7:00, as we start districts for football. District soccer's first-round game this Saturday versus Sykesville at Farmington. Harper McClard, if you hadn't heard, she competed at the state for state golf. She got 29th out of a total of 90 golfers, and luckily, we get her back next year. Hopefully, she can make all-state, top 15 make all-state for that, so we're excited for Harper. The volleyball, softball, and tennis teams finished their seasons the past few weeks in their district tournaments. I did want to make one quick note of the volleyball team recorded the most wins in the season since, Misha has been keeping records of those on our, on the website. We don't know, I, we haven't gotten the records that we have in the, in yearbooks and things in the past, so once we get that, I'll, I'll update you on that, but they had a great season. The competition cheer team is headed to their state competition this weekend, so we'll be excited to hear how they, how they do there. Junior high fall sports have also wrapped up their seasons, and tryouts for winter sports have already occurred. Those are already, some of the seasons are already underway. Elementary and middle school, basketball sign-ups end this week, so if you know someone wanting to sign up for basketball, make sure they get it done this week. Fall sports are coming to a conclusion. I do have a report on those, what, how many teams we had. Flag football, there were five first and second grade teams, six third and fourth grade teams, five fifth and sixth grade teams, so 16 teams total, first through six, with approximately 160 kids, which is about 10 on each team. Volleyball, we had three first, and this is the, volleyball's the one sport that's different than all the other ones. They do theirs just by grade, so we don't have them in, as much in schools as we do with all of our other sports, just because of the way the league's constituted. But we had three first and second grade teams, two third grade teams, two fourth grade teams, three fifth grade teams, three sixth grade teams, so 13 total, with about 130 kids in those, on those teams. Cross-country, we had a huge spike. Last year, I think we had 13 kids. We had 46 this year, so we're excited. And actually, one of our coaches, who we just hired on staff as an assistant, he runs that program for us, for the city over there, so it was a great jump this year. Again, anytime you get kids' grades one through six that want to go out and run cross-country, I think that's a, that's a positive. Our junior Tigers football team played in their championship this past weekend. That's our tackle football team that plays in the Heartland Football League, and they unfortunately fell to Dexter 13-6, but they had a great year. Boys' basketball camps at the junior high, Coach Fraser ran a camp essentially every day for Sixth Street weeks on Tuesdays. He had about 40-something kids signed up, more kids showed up than that, but did a great job with that, and that finished up this past, this past week. Future Tiger Nights, both practices and games happen for our softball, volleyball, and football programs. This is an opportunity our coaches are providing, basically, they'll have, we were doing future Tiger Nights previously, but we've added a layer to, where they, we bring them in to practice with our high school kids, and then a couple of weeks later, usually, we have them come back to be recognized as part of their, those youth teams. Softball, for example, their season was in the summer, but we brought them in that second week of September for a practice, and then brought them to a game to be recognized. Same thing with volleyball and football was this past, this past Friday night. Community news, the local soccer community, many of you probably know all this already, know some of this already, but the local soccer community has come out in a big way to help one of our own. Last week, the soccer parents, the boys' soccer team held a tailgate to raise money for one of our players diagnosed with cancer, and it was a fantastic success. The proceeds from the raffle and tailgate are north of $3,000. Soccer as a whole, I have found, is a pretty tight-knit community. Jackson's entire team came to our game for that tailgate, paid to get in. Many of Notre Dame's members, we, the soccer coach had reached out to those coaches, and many of Notre Dame's team was here as well. They actually play each other tomorrow at Jackson. They're doing an event at that game, so proceeds of their, of their money will go to our students' family. Just, you know, you hear a lot of negative, right? I mean, and this is something that's really cool. Like, it's really, really going well. They've already reached out, and I know Mandy's been dealing with Care to Learn to help the family as well. Sykesville had an event they do every year, but this year, their proceeds, which is about $1,000, is going to go to, go to our Cape family. So we can't, you know, if you see, you know, a member of those community, not only our soccer parents, and Paul's wife Amy's been instrumental in this as well, but any of those parents, you know, make sure and thank them, but also anybody you see from a neighboring community that gave to this family, say, hey, this is what we heard. They like hearing nice things about their people, too, right? So I encourage you to do that. Lastly, Booster Club event, 11:22, the Booster Bash. They'll start at six to, from six to seven at the indoor. We'll do tours at the indoor that night on that Friday, and then it'll conclude at Bold Marketing over here from 7:00 to 9:00. We'll have some coaches there to speak, some of our new coaches, and we're, they're doing this as a Booster Club drive. Paul, you want to talk anymore about that?
I don't, but it'd be good. It'd be very good. I'm going to be out of town. I will be attending, but it's going to be a fantastic event. Casey, Casey wants to talk about it.
I will be there, and there's food and drink.
Yes.
So come on. If you do come, you have to join.
Yes, that's right.
It's cheaper faculty and staff, and pretty cheap for community members, so. It should be fun just trying to get people involved.
Awesome. Any questions for me?
Mr. Moyers, not to put you on the spot.
But you're going to anyway.
It would really fit in the agenda. Do you want to talk about, through our partnership with CMO, what we were able to do for staff at their game, and then kind of what that looks like moving ahead?
Oh, yeah, so, so CMO, this, what game was that, the 14th? Yeah, yeah, the 14th, the CMO game was CGPS night. It was 5-7-3 day, which they, they give it, they basically provide, they give $5.73 back to the school of wherever you're coming from, like if it was all over the area. But they also made that CGPS night, so we had discounted tickets. You get, you get a free ticket if you were a staff member, so they gave us a code for that, so they go in and get a free ticket, and then, then any tickets that you bought above and beyond that was $5, went back to our school district, which we're going to give, we're going to put that in the, in the foundation, right? We, they recognize flag football members there. They got to be a part of the tunnel. Some of our kids got to be a part of the tunnel for that, and that's, those are going to be theme nights throughout the course of the year with some of those sports. Volleyball did the same thing. So volleyball had a, an opportunity for all of our volleyball kids that are in the youth league to go to a volleyball game for five bucks, and then they had a camp set up, a practice session set up with CMO players after the game. So they got to go to the game, plus stick around and have a, have that. And then in basketball, again, you'll be seeing some of those things, theme nights for just specifically CGPS as part of the agreement with CMO. So it's cool.
And they got to recognize Teresa.
Oh, yeah. At the game, Teresa Taylor was recognized in between the firsts, or the, one of the TV timeouts. So she was the, if you were there for the game, she was on the field and got recognized as the regional teacher of the year, which was really cool.
That's awesome. Thanks for that.
Thanks, guys. It's great.
Thank you. Up next, we have our board reports, and first up is the MSBA delegate report. Mr. Cook, are you covering that tonight for Ms., for Dr. Fagley?
There was a meeting in Kansas City.
There was. Sorry, your name was on here.
I remember that. No, not that I, I was not.
Mr. Cook has nothing to report.
No report, no report. I'm sure Dr. Fagley will update us when she gets back. Up next, we have our legislative report with Ms. Flinji.
Yes, okay, so I don't know if you are aware, but there's an election next week.
What for?
Lots of Lots of things that I've been hearing about, you know, different things that affect public schools, whether it's funding, school choice and vouchers, eliminating Department of Education. There's all kinds of things floating around. If you are ever curious about how the MSBA feels about any certain legislative move, I have actually attached, yes, it's up, a handy guide. You can find it through the link on here, but also you can just Google MSBA advocacy positions and pretty much any topic legislative that you think of, they're going to talk within this document about what their, their positions are. So it's just a nice thing to, you know, kind of refer to if you're curious about how something in particular would affect public schools in general. Also, I wanted to talk briefly about Amendment Two. There are seven, I think, amendments slash proposals on the ballot next week. Amendment Two is the one that is sports betting and online betting and that part of the, the wording I actually wrote down, 10% tax to education after expenses incurred. So obviously, the topic of education has been big around that particular amendment. So out of curiosity, I wanted to know kind of how that has affected other states that have done something similar. So two things that I found was, first of all, typically when you see something like that where it says X amount of this tax is going to go towards education funding, what happens is even if the schools get that funding, it is not necessarily funding above and beyond what they're currently getting. What actually ends up happening is that legislation just takes funding away from a different sector, and you just end up with the same funding in education. So, you know, you might hear, oh, we're going to get 10%, but really that 10% is just going to be pulled out of, of somewhere else. The other thing is Kansas actually passed a very similar law in the past couple of years, and $194 million in sports wagers were done, waged, and of that $194 million, $1,134 went to education. So I am just sharing that not to give you an opinion on betting, any of that, one way or the other, one way or the other with gambling, but just to maybe point out that the education piece isn't what should be influencing your decision on that particular amendment. So that's all I've got for you.
Thank you. Very informative. $119 million would have been nice.
Yes, it would have.
That was what was waged, wasn't it?
Said it was $1,134.
Yeah. All right. Thank you. Up next, we have the Cape Public School Foundation. Do we have a report on that tonight? Okay. I know Dr. Fagley typically shares that if Ms. McDonald's not here. Up next, we have approval of consent agenda. We got a short read tonight, just payment of bills sent out previously. Give me a second to review that if you need to. Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda item?
So moved. Second.
Mr. Cook, Mr. Welker, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Consent agenda is approved. Up next, we have the business portion of our meeting tonight, and up first is the approval of Marquand Zion School District Inclusion in Consortium at the CTC. So the, get this pulled up here, the recommendation I'm looking to get a motion for is to approve the inclusion of the Marquand Zion School District in the current consortium of the Cape Girardeau Career and Technology Center. Can I get a motion?
So moved. Second.
Mr. Cook and Mr. Welker, discussion.
So, so with this approval is we're just going to be adding a few students. It's about an hour drive for them. The superintendent gave me a call and, and they weren't, well, I don't want to, they, they were wanting more options, so they decided that they could drive to, transport their kids to the CTC so that they can have those additional options for them. So we were, we happy to take those students on. It's not going to be a lot. This was an initiative for their board as well, for the superintendent, and so we decided to bring it to you all so that we can allow those students to attend.
How often do they come?
Every day. It'll be the same schedule.
Wow, an hour drive, one way.
But they really like our, our nursing program, our healthcare programming too, so that was part of the reason why they wanted to send the students.
Yep. Any other questions? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Up next, we have the approval of CTC/Southeast Missouri State University MOU for Precision Machining Instruction. Looking for a motion to the tune of the recommendation to authorize the superintendent or his designated to negotiate a reimbursement agreement with Southeast Missouri State University for the utilization of Southeast facility as an instructor for the CTC's Precision Machining Program in the amount not to exceed $30,000. Can I get a motion?
So moved. Second.
Mr. Cook, Mr. Welker, discussion.
So this recommendation comes from the need for offsetting the cost of having an instructor that's actually substituting currently. He's actually a full-time staff member at Southeast Missouri State University. Because they host that half-day block at CTC, and he dedicates those three and a half hours to instruction every time, SEMO has requested that we help offset the cost of his salary. So SEMO will actually house him as their full-time employee and take care of that side of it from the employer's standpoint. We're essentially negotiating a payment of services contract for him to be our instructor part-time through CTC's block. This would allow us to negotiate up to no more than $30,000 for those services for the remainder of the year. Any questions for me about the recommendation?
Hearing none. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That is approved. Thank you. And last but not least, we have information and proposals from board members. You guys got anything this month? All right. Well, with that being said, I will take a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Cook, Mr. Welker, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?